Okay, here we go. So hello, everybody. Thank you for being here today in Zoom meeting. This is something different. We're not used to this format. So I just bear with patience and let's see if we can accomplish this meeting all together successfully. All right. Our meeting starts at 5:06 PM. We have quorum. I will now call the board meeting of appeals to order.
Thank you very much.
Please, if you, for some reason, are somewhere.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me.
Put your phone to mute. That's okay. I'm just reading the rules out. Please to phone.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, so anybody that's not going to be talking or it's going to be said, please put your phone on mute until you are asked or you want to say something, please, okay? So today is Wednesday, June 24th, 2020. We have two hearings to hear today for the board and to hear on the board of appeals. People that are our board appeal partners are on. It's Ed Cohen, George Bruce, Walter Gold. Also, we have Michael. Corbin, I'm sorry, Michael. Appreciate that. Sorry.
Norman.
Corbin. Norman rolled in. You got it. Thanks.
See you, Marty.
All right, and then the other person is Michael. Michael, what's your last name? I don't want to screw that one up.
I'm not that picky.
Okay. He's the enforcement zone administrator and also we have our board secretary, Vanessa Dornal. So welcome, everybody. My name is Norman Dan. I will be storing people in for any hearing that we have that's presented to the board. We'll assign these asks that you speak, you know, with clear and that we can hear you at all times. Testify 1% of the time and make sure that you speak when you're asked to speak, all right? Okay, give me a second. So let's skip that. There's no door, obviously, in this here. So I'm going through the list, guys. There's no doors. Don't worry about the doors in this case. Yep, we're on Zoom, so no problem with speaking up. We're being recorded. We all know that we're being recorded at this point. We were here testimony from the person that is bringing the petition. And then we will hearing give 10 minutes for the person that's max for the petition to speak. Then the opposed will also have a chance to speak. And I think that should be it. I'm going to ask Vanessa, do you present the first case, Vanessa?
We're going to listen to Elm Street.
Okay, so is anybody on for Elm Street?
Yes. Yeah, Chris Moskow from the redevelopment authority.
Okay, so Chris, I'm going to swear you in. You promised that everything you say is truthful, honest, and everything you testify is true. And can you spell your name? Do your name and spell your name as well.
Sure. Yes, I understand. I do. And it's C-H-R-I-S, last name M-O-S-K-A-L, Moskow.
And I'm with redevelopment authority. Thank you. Go ahead and state your case.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I want to thank the zoning board of appeals for sponsoring this meeting and having us come forward. Certainly, this is very important for us in terms of our ongoing efforts to revitalize and redevelop the Court Square properties in the downtown area of Springfield. And so what I'd like to quickly do is just recognize those individuals this afternoon that are here from both the SRA and the development team. And I'm sure they'll have a few words to say. Number one is Amanda Pham. Amanda is our deputy director of the SRA. Alongside her is attorney Thomas Moore, who is our general counsel. And we also have Mr. Tim Sheehan, who is the City of Springfield Development Director. From our developers, we have Mr. Peter Picnelli. Peter is not only the CEO of Peter Pan Bus Lines, but also the chief officer of the Opel Group. In addition to Mr. Picnelli from the development team is Michael O'Brien. Michael is the executive vice president for Wynn Companies. So they are the representing the development team this afternoon. If I could just open up by saying that the, again, the revitalization of the historic buildings as we know them as the Elm Street properties not only would eliminate a massive blight that has been there for almost 30 years. The development team that was chosen, Opel Wynn, actually is proposing to create a mixed-use development, which is going to include 74 high-quality housing units on the upper five levels of the two buildings and 12,000 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. And certainly will transform that entire property and that entire portion of our downtown. So we look forward to that. But currently, the size and the unusual configuration of the buildings and the courtyard behind the buildings can only create 43 parking spaces out of the required 87 spaces under the zoning ordinance. So we are respectfully this evening seeking a 44-space variance. The remaining parking needs for the development will be served by the nearby MGM Garage and also as well some parking along Elm Street and Court Square Avenue. We believe that this is extremely important. The inability for us to reach the parking requirements under the zoning ordinance would render a substantial hardship on the development team and on the SRA for us to not ever be able to restore and reactivate those properties for modern use. So in terms of an introduction, I would like to then open it up to, I'm assuming, Peter, would you like to speak to begin with? Oh, Peter, unmute yourself.
There you go. Sorry. You know, my comment would be just on the importance of the project.
Before you start, Peter, sorry, before you start, can you say your name, spell it, first and last name, Peter?
My name is Peter Picnelli. The last name is spelled P-I-C-K-N-E-L-L-Y. And I'd just like to comment on the importance of the project and how long, you know, it's, you know, the building's been vacant for over 30 years. It's in the core of our city. You know, I think it's essential for the building to be, you know, renovated for Springfield to see its full renaissance. And my family's been working on trying to get this building renovated for literally 25 years now. And we now have a perfect set of circumstances for this to happen. And without all these circumstances, it will not happen. You know, you've got a great partner in Wynn Construction who's done plenty of these refurbs. We've, you know, we've got MGM who stepped to the plate with millions of dollars. We've had Mass Mutual step to the plate. We've got historic tax credits, millions of dollars, mass housing. So we've got all these entities working together. Oh, and the city's been awesome to work with. You know, we have all, every, you know, we have everything in place to get this done. We are literally on the one-yard line and we just need the, we need the support of this board to make this happen.
Thank you, Peter. Anybody else wants to speak in favor of this petition?
If I could, Michael O'Brien of Wynn Companies. Again, Michael, last name O, apostrophe B-R-I-E-N.
Thank you. Okay, Michael, you go ahead.
Again, speaking on behalf of the development team, Opel, Peter Picnelli, who just spoke, and I couldn't have said anything more eloquently, and Wynn Companies. I've been on this project for five years and working side by side with Peter and all the parties he mentioned. We've come a long way and to the point now where we're working with the city team hand in glove. And they've been fabulous to work with. The city should be complimented on their professionalism and their real desire to make Springfield revitalize. And so for that proposal before you today, as Peter mentioned, is critical to be approved and doing so allowing us to then proceed forward with all of our necessary financing to a point when we'll be prepared to start work if all goes well on a variety of fronts. Late fall, early winter of this upcoming year. So fall, late fall 2020, early winter 2021. So the project is imminent. And I'm on the call today with Adam Stein, our senior vice president of development, Paul Malik, our attorney, as well as Rob Leveque, our consultant, who assisted the city in preparation of the variance request before you. So we look forward to your discussion deliberations and we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in favors to speak on the petition? Anybody else in favor to speak on the petition? Okay, anybody on in disagreeing with this petition? Anybody on the call testify against the petition? Okay, so nobody's on to disagree or oppose the petition. We're going to take this to the chair now and everybody's here. Anybody got a question to the petition before we start and go to voting? Ed, George?
Yeah, this is Eddie Corbin. I'm glad to see that this group headed by Peter was able to generate MGM for the parking for this project. I think that's good. I think that's very good to do that.
Thank you, Eddie. Anybody else? George, any comments?
No, I'll go on to the conference.
Okay, so let's take the vote. All right.
This is Carrie Secretary of State from the law department. Aren't we doing a bifurcated session where we're voting next time so we can allow for comments?
Yeah, Carrie, this is Tom. I have my hand up too. I was going to say the same thing. The council is referring to the new structure because of our limitations due to COVID. We're going to have to through the two-tiered system. And I think the body can't really take a vote at this stage.
Okay, say that again.
So I think the hearing will have to remain open to allow public comment from, based on the developer's input. So in other words, in a normal hearing, you know, the public would be able to hear in real time what the developer just said. And then you'd have the opportunity to respond and kind of give your public input. The way that hearings are done, I mean, I'm speaking, you know, having done the city council's special permit hearings. They'll take in the information. They'll leave the hearing open. They'll continue it to, you know, in this case would be one week. You'd allow for public input to be submitted to the board during that interim period. And then you come back into session, close the hearing at the second meeting and then take your action like you normally would do.
Okay, so we're going to wait a week. So we're going to go into, keep it open. And I'll take the council's advice and move on then to the next step. Vanessa? Everybody, everybody's agreement before we start?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to do, I'm going to do roll. Okay, before you do, I'm going to do roll call for the chair first to all vote on what we just heard to say that we're continuing, all right? For the next meeting, all right? So let's start. Vanessa, you ready to roll call?
Say that again.
Can you do roll call?
All right. Norman rolled on?
Yes.
You in agreement? Hey, Ed Corbin?
Yes, I am in agreement.
Are you in agreement?
Yes, I am.
All right. George Bruce, are you in agreement?
I'm in agreement.
All right, and Walter Gould, are you in agreement?
Yes, I'm in agreement.
Okay, so we're going to now wait. Yes, go ahead, Walter.
Can I ask one question, Walter Gould? Now, this would be, I've got two dates on my paperwork here. We'd be meeting next Wednesday at the same time?
That's correct, Vanessa? Okay.
Correct.
I've got one date that says July 1st. I've got another one that says July 8th.
I believe the 8th was a misprint.
Okay, all right, just verifying. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's, this will was to meet again on July 1st to conclude this matter, okay, guys?
Yeah.
All right, Peter, thanks, Peter, and guys, thanks. Next, next agenda. Vanessa, can you read out the next vision?
Sure. We've got PPC Land LLC for, I believe, 1,000 Caldwell Drive.
Hello, anybody in favor speaking on this petition? Can you please say your names, spell it?
Yes, my name is Robert Quinn. I'm an attorney at Egan Flanagan and Cohen. I represent PPC, PPC Land LLC, as well as Palmer Paving Corporation, which operates a facility at that, at that location, that 1,000 Caldwell Street location. And with me, I believe, is James Toomey, but I haven't seen his face. Jim, are you there?
I am here, yes.
There you are.
Before we start, guys, you guys swear to say the truth and honest on this matter that we're viewing today?
I do.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Thanks. All right, so let's, let's start. Thank you for, thank you for showing up today and bringing your petition forward.
You're very welcome. As an introduction, Jim is the manager of Palmer Paving Corporation, which, as I said, operates an asphalt production facility at the location. We're here to request from the board of variance from Article 4.4.31, which of the zoning bylaw in order to allow Palmer Paving to construct a mobile freestanding membrane structure at that location. As you may know, Palmer Paving has been operating its business here in Springfield for more than 45 years. And it, its basic business is the reclamation and recycling of asphalt, which it collects and stores on-site until it's needed for production of asphalt products. The Massachusetts Department of Transportation, and by the way, I'm assuming that all the members of the board have received the application.
We have, yes.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm going to, I'm just going through sort of summarizing points made in that application and providing some additional information. But last year, the Massachusetts Department of Transportation revised its requirements as to how asphalt can be, must be stored, reclaimed asphalt in particular. And in the application, there's an Exhibit A, which has highlighted at the top the specific portion of that regulation that affects Palmer Paving, which, and which brings us here before the board. Just in brief, it says that reclaimed asphalt pavement shall be stockpiled on a free draining base and kept separate from other aggregates. These stockpiles shall be covered in a manner that prevents the intrusion of water, but also allows the flow of air. So basically, a structure that is a structure yet allows air to enter and water not to enter. So Palmer Paving, Palmer Paving's operations actually result in, over time, changes in the topography of the site. And if you look at Exhibit B to the application, there are five folders that are contained there, which show over the years how the operations result in changing topography. Changing topography is one of the reasons that the structure that's being requested here is, is mobile because that would allow for moving this building easily in the event that the operations of the moment require that the building be moved. So the only way that, that is economically viable for Palmer Paving to, in fact, meet the requirements of the DOT's regulations is to construct this mobile freestanding building that has a membrane structure. And to see what we mean by a membrane structure, Exhibit C of the, of the application. The first page of Exhibit C is this plan that was produced by engineer retained by Palmer Paving. And it shows the location. You can see on Caldwell and on Page Boulevard, the intersection of those, that corner. And it shows the location, proposed location of the primary location of where the building is expected to be. And this is screened by trees. It's an entryway to 291. And that's important because it's not going to visually impact any of the neighbors. It's going to be well within the existing structures of the, of the operations of the company without having a visual impact. The remainder of Exhibit C is a 27-page brochure, which actually shows an example of what one of these membrane buildings looks like. It prevents water from entering, but allows air to circulate. More specifically, and I'm not sure if these reached the board, but recently Jim Toomey sent, I believe, photographs to, perhaps it was to Michael, which show examples of the, of other locations in Western Massachusetts where Palmer Paving has, also has operations and it has already constructed these buildings in three other municipalities. Jim, did those photos get sent to the?
Yeah, I believe they did, Rob, and they were also included in the application.
Jim, hello.
Yes.
Okay. We did receive it.
Okay, so you do have those photos. All right, so, so the problem, of course, is that the zoning bylaw, Article 4.4.31, generally prohibits membrane structures in this zoning district. So we have them. And that's why we're before the board requesting this variance. We, we have brought, and Jim himself made a presentation to the East Springfield Neighborhood Council, which reviewed and discussed among themselves this variance, this requested variance. And a letter was sent to June 6th.
Yes, we saw, we saw that in favor.
Okay. And in addition.
That came separately to us.
Okay, good. So as long as it's with you. And in addition, I'll point out, and perhaps you know this, those members who have been on the board for some time, that several years ago, Smith and Wesson requested a variance for a similar membrane structure, which was allowed by this board, about that, that building or buildings were constructed about a mile down the road from Palmer Paving's location. So the, the issue is if, is what happens to Palmer Paving if we can't employ this membrane structure for the, for the production that the company is involved in. And there's going to be a severe financial impact. I'd like to ask Jim to speak briefly about that and the other aspects of this request as he's, he's the hands-on guy and, and I think we'll be able to give you a better, better insight as to the actual specifics.
Before Jim starts, Jim, can you say your name and spell your last name as well? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Jim Toomey, last name T-O-O-M-E-Y. I'm the manager with Palmer Paving Corporation. And thank you all for being here and allow us to make this presentation tonight and hope that everybody continues to be safe and healthy. I may reiterate a few things that Rob said, but in 2019, Mass DOT amended the hot mix manufacturing process specification to include a mandate that a building be erected, cover the recycled asphalt product that we prepared to put in the manufacturing process. The type of building, again, open-ended space will out of the top for airflow. Palmer Paving does have four facilities and Springfield would be the last facility that will comply with this new regulation in their specifications. Reasons for the, for the change includes, some of them include the following. By having a more consistent environment for this product, it's typically left outside. It gets wet, gets tossed around, people dump things in it that's not supposed to be in it. It makes a real inconsistent product. We'll be able to manufacture this product with the recycle at lower temperatures because it'd be cleaner, it'll be drier. So it'll be, it'll be a more consistent end product so that everything will come out more consistently. Less emissions, less fuel, safer environment, less dust because it now has a cover on it. And above all, for us, we've had a few incidents, incidents where some of our employees been injured trying to cover these, these stockpiles that are pretty large with, with some very large tarps. Recycling of asphalt is currently used for any city, town, or mass agency. The specification for the use of the recycled asphalt is managed by the Mass DOT. Any inability to not use recycled asphalt in our mixes would cause Palmer Paving a tremendous hardship financially as all new virgin aggregate materials would need to be trucked in to comply with specifications for virgin material and the cost of production would be increased significantly. This amendment to the asphalt production process by Mass DOT is a very positive step for utilizing a very valuable recycled resource by controlling the environment in a more consistent manner. Asphalt is a widely-used green product. And that's pretty much all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Mr. Chairman, Walter Gould?
Go, Walter. Go ahead, Walter.
I just want to congratulate Mr. Toomey for reaching out to the Neighborhood Council. A lot of times that helps us and guides us in how we can vote. And I wanted to congratulate you for doing that. I think that's a great thing that, of course, a lot of the groups did that too. So thank you very much for doing that and I'm sure the Neighborhood Council appreciates it, appreciates it too.
Yeah, they're great people to work with, Mr. Gould, you know.
Yeah, thanks. That's, that's definitely a positive for us to make a decision sometimes knowing that your neighborhood is also with you on this matter. Anybody else ask any questions or any comments?
Yeah, I would just like to, like to conclude my, my comments with about one minute.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to conclude by focusing on some of the purposes of the zoning bylaw. I'll just quickly cite the ones that I think are relevant here. One, to promote the general welfare of the city. Two, to protect the health and safety of the residents. Three, to promote economic development. And four, to encourage the most appropriate, the most appropriate use of land. I think that, and we, that this request for a variance advances each of those goals in that it will allow a longstanding and vibrant member of the Springfield business community to continue operating at that. to continue operating at that location. And it provides local jobs and employment. And it uses techniques that, in fact, emphasize recycling instead of consumption of new resources, which is important to the environment as well as to the residents. All, all of this, we submit without any adverse impact on, on the Butters and other Springfield residents. So we, we thank you very much for your consideration and we hope that you will ruin our fate.
Thank you very much. So we just heard from.
May I add one last point? I'm sorry to.
Okay.
Mass, Mass, this is the COVID piece of our presentation. Mass DOT instituted these new requirements last summer. They gave all facilities like Palmer Paving one year to comply. We obviously started this process in January. We had a hearing scheduled in February and everybody knows what happens then, what happened then. We really appreciate the fact that the city and the zoning board in particular have, have, have been trying to reschedule this with. And we're finally here. The bottom line is that the one year that the Mass DOT gave for compliance expires at the end of this month. So we would hope that the ZBA could give, could expedite at its earliest convenience a decision here so that we cannot run afoul of, of the state regulations to the extent possible.
So I would ask, ask our Law Department that's on how we would handle this one today. They're looking at, you know, the month of this month and next week is the first of the month.
Right, well, we have to go to the first, because that's what we posted. We're doing the bifurcated because of the COVID rules as attorney courts.
Yeah, I would agree, I would agree with Counselor. I don't know, I'm not sure there's anything we can do about the timing, understanding the concern. We're in this strange situation with these regulations where we're bound by the bifurcated hearing and, and we really don't have a choice to, to vote tonight as much as the body would be able to in their own minds deliberate.
Yeah, yeah.
Sort of, you know, we have to let the public have their say and that's, we're stuck with that.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
We understand.
So, so before we move on, so I would ask, is there, do you, do you have a letter? Could we give you a letter, explain to whoever you're, you're speaking to on the permission to, to build on the, to have, explain why this is happening or is it because of COVID? Are they gonna give you as a break?
Yeah, I, I believe they're gonna relax the requirements a little bit. I haven't been told that, as you know, a lot of Mass DOT still, the staff still isn't, isn't working day to day. I would anticipate that they would relax at some. However, a letter from, from the Board would certainly go a long way in helping us explain to them what, you know, what we've been through this, this, you know, this spring, so.
Okay, so I, I would say, and I'm just gonna bring, you know, and make sure the Council, our, our legal department are listening and approve of what I'm gonna say and make sure it's all okay and legit. I would say that we have Vanessa draw a letter saying that our voting for this, this decision is gonna be in July, I believe July 1st, right? And then we'll have a decision, we would have a decision by July 1st and that the police understand because of COVID, the hardship that we're having, the issues we're having. Maybe the Law Department can hand it up for us with Vanessa to send out the letter. Other than that, I would say we would vote on it next week, obviously. And hopefully you have a decision by then.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, thank you.
Everybody else set? Any comments?
I think you gotta ask if there's opposition there. I don't.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually say that. I'm, I'm trying to finish up if there's anybody speaking in favor of, of favor of the. Anybody else speak in favor of the proposal? Anybody in favor of the proposal? Okay, let's move on to the next step. Anybody oppose of this proposal? Anybody in line oppose of this proposal? Once again, the third time and final, anybody in line on opposing this proposal? Okay, so at this point, I think we're all, we did diligent on this. We'll move on to next week.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry to bother you. In the part, this is, this stuff is all new to me, so excuse me, but.
Yeah, no.
In the part we're in favor, maybe we should mention that we did get a letter in favor for the East Springfield Neighborhood Council?
Yes, it's Walter, it's recorded, everything's recorded already. So you did mention it, so we'll re-say it again. We did a letter of proposal, of favor of this, of this proposal. The Neighborhood Council was agreeing with them. According to Larry, they're a good partner to the neighborhood and, and they were agreeing with this, this decision. So we are recording, we recorded twice now that this decision has been made from the Neighborhood Council. So thank you, Walter, for bringing that up again.
You're welcome.
Right, and anybody else, any comments? Michael, before we, before we conclude this, I have one comment, Michael. What is the standing of the city for this, this, this proposal? What are, are zoning law, our office have to say?
Well, the plan and department recommendations were in favor of it. And I believe everybody got a copy of the plan and department recommendations.
Okay, all right, so that's good to know, all right. All right, so at this point, and any other subjects on the matter for just, just for you today? Any new business? Any old business? Motion to adjourn meeting?
Mr. Chair, sorry, Carrie from the Law Department. I think you need to continue to next week, this second matter, and do a roll.
Correct, correct, sorry, I'm new to this, so I apologize.
We're all new to it.
Thank you. So I'm gonna make a proposal that we, somebody makes motion to continue on this, these decisions to vote on next week and let's do roll call as well.
Walter Gould? To next week?
Okay, so, all right, and let's do roll call?
Norman Rodan, do you agree to continue it next week? George Bruce, do you agree?
Yes, yes.
Walter Gould, do you agree?
Yes.
And Eddie Corbin, do you agree?
Yes.
Okay.
So it sounds like we're all in favor, so motion has been passed for next week. Thank you for helping us out. All right, so anything, before we close, any motion to adjourn or anything else you guys want to speak about? Looks, I'm gonna need a motion to adjourn, guys.
Walter, you gonna make a motion to adjourn?
Second. All right, so let's do roll call?
Roll call to adjourn, Norman Rodan?
Yes.
Walter Gould?
Yes.
Eddie Corbin?
Yes.
And George Bruce?
Yes.
I want to thank everybody for, you know, doing this with us today in Zoom. It's different, new. Thank you for your patience and, and let's, let's go forward, all right, guys? Let's all keep safe.